So we will begin the meeting. This is the planning board meeting for November 16th, 2021. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The upcoming meeting dates will be December 21st, 2021, and January 11th, 2022. We have minutes from the September 14th meeting as the rest of the board had an opportunity to review those minutes. Looks like I'll accept a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. We'll start with the roll call. Craig?
Craig Arco.
Richard Campbell.
Lori G.
John Eichman.
Ed Miyoshi.
Sarah Bledsoe.
So I want to announce to the, to the audience, if anyone is here in the matters of I Park or Stormville subdivision, both of those items have been removed from the agenda at the request of those applicants, and they'll be heard probably the next meeting. The first item on our agenda is Stone Ridge Commons. Is the applicant here?
Hi.
Hi.
Amy Bamberdiere from Dan's Sticoso.
Hello, Amy.
How are you?
Wonderful.
We're just here for an extension. We're currently working with Scott and the town with, on the sewer connection. So that's one of the holdups, and then obviously weather at this point also.
Very good. So you're seeking a six-month extension through May 2022?
Yes.
Any questions by anyone on the board or any of the professionals? If not, I'll accept a motion to grant that extension.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried.
Thank you. Have a good night.
The next item on the agenda is State Farm. We approved State Farm. We did a resolution, I believe, at the last meeting. We made the approval subject to ARC approval. They have gained that approval, and so they've, they've taken care of that particular condition. So no further action is required. Next item is Project Niagara, Rolling Frito-Lay Sales.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jennifer Gray, attorney with the law firm of Keenan Bean, here on behalf of Rolling Frito-Lay Sales LP in support of their application for construction of the fulfillment center at the I Park campus along Route 52. We're here tonight in furtherance of our site plan and subdivision application that's pending before you. The last time we were here was October 12th, when we had our continued public hearing, and the board closed the public hearing that night. Since then, we've met with the ARC two times regarding the architecture of the proposed building, and we did receive their positive recommendation, their approval, on October 28th. We've also been busy with the town board as well. On November 4th, we were at the town board meeting where they, as lead agency, declared a negative declaration pursuant to SECR, finding that the project will not have any significant adverse environmental impact, impacts. And they also approved the economic redevelopment special permit that night as well. So we're now here before you to hopefully close out our site plan and subdivision application. We've made a number of submittals to your board, including an updated SWIP in response to comments from your consulting engineer, updated EIF, updated renderings consistent with the recommendations of the ARC, an updated plan set as well. Some of the changes that we'll go through in the presentation tonight include the fact that the fueling island for the fleet center has been removed. If you recall, last time we were before you, the truck wash bay was removed. Now the fueling island has been removed, so there'll be no gasoline fueling pumps at the fleet center anymore. As I mentioned, we also made the facade improvements consistent with the ARC's recommendations. We've modified the landscape plan also to include additional landscaping along Route 52 and also along West Drive for further screening of the proposed building. And then lastly, there were modifications made to the water and sewer layout pursuant to our coordination with Global Foundries for the water and sewer connections. So with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Ron Treers from CHA. I'm here today with a team of folks from CHA and also representatives of Frito-Lay. And Ron will go through a short presentation that provides you with updates to describe the changes that have been made since our last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ron Treers from CHA, working on the project for Frito-Lay. And I just wanted to go over the changes that have happened since the last time we were here with the project. So just kind of a brief overview. The facade and exterior architectural improvements. Changes were made and approved by Architectural Review Commission. The fleet center, as Jennifer just mentioned, the fuel island was removed, and also the fuel storage tanks were removed, and the wash bay was removed previously. We added a lot of additional landscaping to the project to provide additional screening along Route 52. Basically, along the entire length of Route 52, we've added a lot of evergreen screening along the entire corridor. There were some minor modifications to the underground utility systems, including the water system and sanitary system. Sanitary very minor. The water system was revised and the layout based on our coordination with Global Foundries. So the square footage of the warehouse building has not changed. Roughly 156,000 square feet. The fulfillment center parameters, 420 by 335, that has not changed. The height of the high bay has not changed. The parking has not changed. The number of automobile, trailer, tractor parking spaces has not changed. So none of that has changed from the previous submission. Site overview and the existing site, the proposed rendering of the main warehouse and then the fleet center in the lower right. This is the entrance to the office portion of the main building. And another view of the main warehouse building. Looking, it's looking kind of towards the northeast corner of the building. This is a rendering of the fleet center building for truck maintenance. Fleet Center modifications include removal of the fuel island, the associated fuel tanks. As I said, the wash bay was previously removed from the plans before this. So additional landscaping along 52. So we've planted a double row of evergreens in the landscape area that's on the north side of the main warehouse building, and then continued that to the east along the landscape area that's there as a buffer to 52, and pretty much continuous row of double evergreens along the entire Route 52 corridor to supplement the existing trees that are there. So the screen should be, should be very well, very good along that corridor. The water supply was changed in our, through our conversations with Global Foundries' utility staff to satisfy what they want us to do with both relocating their 20-inch main and how we were tying into their 20-inch main. We have a connection from the 20-inch that goes to our mechanical room. It's on the north side of the office building. And from there, we're feeding out to the guardhouse, and there's a separate tap that goes to the fleet center building. Fire protection is provided around the perimeter. Sanitary really hasn't changed. There's just been some minor movements of lines within a few feet of where they were in the last submission. But basically, the sanitary system reconfiguration is very minor. So that's, that's pretty much all the updates that we had. Minor changes and enhanced landscaping. Anyone have any questions? We can answer for you.
So where are the trucks going to get gassed and washed now at the?
So they'll be washed at other Frito-Lay facilities and gassed using off-site services.
Okay, so they'll be pulling into the local gas stations and?
Yeah, local retail or whatnot.
When, when the ARB made their final review, did they make any other changes to the building?
They presented a different color scenario to them.
Shall we have you come up? I'm sorry, it's hard for us here.
My name is Drew Lucas. I'm also with CHA. When we met with the ARB initially and presented them our initial rendering, you know, they gave us feedback on what they'd like to see. We came back to them with this design that they then accepted that kind of broke up the facility and, you know, sort of created a rhythm along that corridor and, you know, made it resemble a little more of a, of an office complex. The colors we also selected are the colors that are being used in the apartment complex that's being developed close to this site, you know. So our colors are coordinated with, with their colors.
Now, the, the facade, those are just not actual windows. Those are just like shadowed?
Correct. They're actually different colored panels that, that look like windows.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It's hard to put windows in this sort of building.
Yeah, understood. I just wanted to try to understand.
Right.
And from our last meeting, you said all ventilation was through the roof? No, no vents on the sides of the structure?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments by board members or by professionals? Nope. None? Okay.
Have you answered any other questions you may have?
If there are no other questions, then I will go ahead and read a resolution that's prepared. Resolution of final subdivision site plan approval, Project Niagara, Rolling Frito-Lay Sales LP. Location is 10-350 North Drive. Whereas on August 20th, 2021, applications for approval of an economic redevelopment special permit, subdivision and site plan was submitted to the town board of the town of East Fishkill by Rolling Frito-Lay Sales LP, contract vendee, the applicant, for construction of a fulfillment center, fleet center, and guardhouse containing a total of approximately 155,958 square feet, 20 loading docks, 109 automobile parking spaces, 100 trailer parking spaces, and 13 tractor parking spaces, as well as stormwater management facilities, fencing, landscaping, sight lighting, signage, and other utility infrastructure. The project on property located at 10-350 North Drive, consisting of approximately 28.42 acres, in the I-1 light industrial zoning district, which property includes portions of lots 2 and 3, as shown in the final subdivision plat. Global Foundries US 2 LLC filed in the Dutchess County Clerk's Office on August 3rd, 2017 as FM number 12578 and designated as tax parcels and so forth. And whereas the, in, on August 26th, 2021, the town board referred the application to the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board and authorized the circulation of its notice of intent to declare lead agency pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And whereas on September 3rd, 2021, the application was referred to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to general municipal law. And whereas the project is a type 1 action under SECR. And whereas on September 23rd, 2021, the town board and planning board opened a duly noticed joint public hearing on the special permit subdivision and site plan applications, at which time all interested parties were given an opportunity to be heard. And whereas on, on September 23rd, 2021, the town board closed the public hearing on the special permit application. Whereas the planning board referred the application to the ARB and received approval from the ARB on October 28th, 2021. Whereas on October 12th, 2021, the planning board continued the public hearing on the subdivision and site plan application, at which time all interested parties were given an opportunity to be heard, and the public hearing was closed on October 12th, 2021. And whereas on November 4th, 2021, the town board, as lead agency pursuant to SECR, adopted a negative declaration of environmental significance, finding the project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and approved the economic redevelopment special permit. And whereas the town and its consultants have requested revisions in keeping with the town's site plan and subdivision review standards set forth in the town zoning law. And whereas the town and its consultants have issued their respective comments, which have been and will be addressed by the applicant to the town satisfaction. And whereas the applicant consents and agrees to inclusion in the Route 52 traffic improvement area assessment and the proposed fire district assessment. And whereas the planning board has considered the application with respect to all relevant provisions of the town code. Whereas the planning board is fully familiar with the project and has reviewed the project relative to all applicable provisions of the town code, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants preliminary subdivision plat approval as shown on the plan entitled Preliminary Plats Subdivision of Lots 2 and 3 and Road Roman numeral 3 of File Map Number 12578, prepared by Chasen Engineering Land Surveying, Landscaping, Architecture, and Geology Co., DPC, dated August 18th, 2021, last revised October 8th, 2021. Be it further resolved, the planning board hereby finds that the final subdivision plat will not be substantively changed from the preliminary subdivision plat and hereby determines that a public hearing on the final plat is not required. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants final subdivision plat approval as shown on the plat referenced above, and the planning board chairman is authorized to sign such plat. Subject to satisfaction with the conditions set forth below, and the planning board hereby grants final site plan approval as shown on plans entitled Site Plan Subdivision East Fishkill Fulfillment Center, prepared by CHA last revised November 9th, 2021, which plan set consists of 63 pages. Subject to the following conditions, and here I'll slow down just a little bit so everyone can be aware of the conditions. So A, prior to the signing of the final subdivision plat by the planning board chairman, the following conditions will be satisfied. Number one, endorsement of Dutchess County Health Department. B, prior to the signing of the final site plan by the planning board chairman, the following conditions shall be satisfied. Number one, sign-off from Global Foundries regarding water, wastewater service. Two, the applicant shall execute a stormwater management facility maintenance easement in agreement for the private stormwater controls on the project site acceptable to the town engineer and town attorney. The easement shall be recorded by the applicant at its sole expense in the office of the Dutchess County Clerk. Three, payment to the town of all outstanding escrow fees for professional consultant review of the project. Four, resolution of comments and CPL site plan and SWIP review memo dated October 27th, 2021, and sound analysis review memo dated November 2nd, 2021. Five, Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health approval for water and sewer services. Six, the applicant shall replace any dead or dying trees located on the berm between Route 52 and the parking lot to the satisfaction of the town planner. The replacement trees should be evergreen trees and a minimum of five feet in height.
I have a modification to the next one.
Seven, Gate 2 to be modified to the satisfaction of the town and town traffic consultant.
So it should be Gate 2 to be modified to restrict access to automobiles only. And then I have an eight.
To the satisfaction, continues.
Okay. Yeah, to the satisfaction of the town and the town traffic consultant.
Okay.
And then eight is during construction, an environmental monitor will be present on the site.
Could you repeat that?
During construction, there'd be an environmental monitor present on the site.
Got it. Okay. C, general conditions. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall establish all required escrows for construction inspections and remodeling. The escrow shall be replenished upon notice to the applicant by the town, and any remaining escrow funds shall be returned to the applicant upon issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the fulfillment center. Two, the applicant shall implement and maintain all mitigation measures set forth in the negative declaration pursuant to SECR dated November 4th, 2021. Three, all construction to occur Monday through Saturday, excluding holidays, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM unless otherwise authorized by the town. Four, compliance with all requirements of the town board's Economic Redevelopment Special Permit Approval Resolution. Five, the applicant shall obtain a New York State DOT Highway Work Permit for the removal of the existing traffic signal at Gate 2 and any other work proposed in the New York State DOT right-of-way. The planning board shall be copied on all correspondence to New York State DOT and HVEA as the town's traffic consultant will be invited to attend all conference calls and/or meetings with New York State DOT regarding the project. Be it further resolved that this conditional approval of the final subdivision plat shall expire 180 days from the date of adoption of this resolution unless all conditions set forth above have been certified, as completed, and the final plat has been submitted for endorsement by the planning board chairman or unless a written request for an extension of the final subdivision plat approval is granted by the planning board. Planning board may grant 90-day extensions to said time period. Be it further resolved that once the final subdivision plat has been endorsed by the planning board chairman, said plat must be filed in the Dutchess County Clerk's Office within 62 days. After said filing, two copies of the final subdivision plat shall be submitted to the town. Be it further resolved that all subsequent owners, unless ease of the project and the project site, shall be required to comply with the terms and conditions of this approval resolution. And be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. There are no other conditions or modifications. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Lori G.
Aye.
Craig Arco.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
John Eichman, I'm an aye. Carried unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
For your time and consideration. Thank you.
I do. The, the next item on the agenda is Emma's Cafe. Good evening.
Good evening. Walter, can you get the approval for the site plan there?
Okay. Do you, we have a copy of this site plan or anything to be viewed as a part of the meeting?
I don't, I don't.
I didn't know that I was supposed to bring a flash drive or nothing until this afternoon.
Perhaps maybe just tell us, tell us about the project.
It was a bar/restaurant. At the beginning of the year, my partner passed away, who held the liquor license, so I'm trying to just turn it over to just a cafe. I would like to change the front of the building, put the entrance on the side in the parking lot, and add a handicap ramp.
Got it. And any other improvements to the exterior or interior that you're contemplating right now?
We're gonna bring it all up to code inside because the, the kitchen area didn't meet code anymore and re-vinyl side the whole place.
Michelle, I think what you've been out to visit the project?
Yes, so, and they had, had gone to AR, the ARC for approval, and they just, they received their approval. The ARC did have a condition asking them to provide rear and side elevations to them, but they approved it with asking them to provide this because I believe his architect is very busy and was not able to complete the side elevations in time for the meeting. So they've agreed to approve them, and then he can provide us with the elevations later, at a later date. And then the other issue is that he's gonna have to add a handicap parking.
And will, will that be a paved pad for the handicap?
I was gonna put down millings down over the whole entire parking lot, which is almost like blacktop, but not really.
Seth, you still need to do painting for handicap parking? Need to paint, paint the limits?
I'm gonna install signs where it was.
Okay. And is that something that we, we can accept for handicap parking?
No, not at this. Millings, except millings. I, I haven't seen that used before. Usually, I've seen millings used in parking lots, but typically, you know, it's pavement. But, I mean, we'd have to double-check. I, I can't answer that, you know, for sure.
I think the, I mean, I'll tell you, the requirement is that it's a firm, stable, slip-resistant surface. I think the ADA code doesn't specify what the material has to be. You know, commonly, obviously, it's, it's concrete or asphalt. But again, if it's, if it's, you can make a, a smooth, firm, slip-resistant surface out of millings, then it could be acceptable.
You can, as long as they're installed right, compacted right. We just, we just actually got done using them on a shoulder project, so, you know, they're stable. The only thing is, I was gonna ask you, if you're talking about putting millings in the entire, entire parking lot, I mean, is that gonna create an issue as far as any of your joining? I, I, I don't, I'm not that, you know, familiar with the property, but is there any like structures like adjacent to it where? What's, what's the parking lot now? Gravel, right?
Yes.
So once you put down like millings, then you have the potential to increase, you know, the runoff onto your neighbor's property. So, I mean, I were, I don't think that was part of the original proposal.
Anything between you and the church? My memory is that it's just an open space up there?
Hmm, there's nothing.
Right, that, that's what I'm trying to satisfy. Pete's worrying about the runoff into a neighbor, and I don't think that you have a close neighbor.
No, I believe there's a big gully between us and the church.
Okay, again, I don't know the area where you are, so, I mean, if you don't feel like that's a concern, then I don't wanna make it a concern. And what about the issue, Brandon, we were talking about the other day on, you know, the call about if there's gonna, if they're gonna put down any millings and it's gonna be within DOT right-of-way? They gotta get approval for that, right?
Yeah, well, I guess, I mean, is your, is your concept just to repair things? I mean, again, I'm not familiar with the surface of the lot, but, I mean, it's been compacted dirt or gravel for a number of years. I mean, right? I mean, that's the way it's been, right? So if it's, if it's smooth and acceptable, you know, you can choose to leave it as it is. You know, maybe just repair the areas that might have, you know, some potholes or whatever like that. I mean, if you, if you do work in the right-of-way, you know, you're gonna be, you gotta be careful of that, that's all.
But I just wanna ask, in front of the structure, between the road and the structure, is that currently paved or is that just gravel as well?
That's gravel as well.
All right, 'cause our code, even for residential, the first 30 feet off the road has to be paved. Beyond that 30 feet, you know, as long as it's flat.
Pulling into the parking lot, it is blacktopped. In front of the building, it's not.
But I'm saying from the edge of the pavement, from Route 52, is it paved a distance of 30 feet in?
I don't think so.
'Cause I think that's gonna be a requirement. That first 30 feet has to be paved.
Okay.
All right.
For commercial?
Well, we do it on residential. I always see no reason not to do it on commercials, so.
I mean, I think if you, if you classify that as, you know, maintenance of the existing facility, you know, you don't have to go back to DOT for that. You know, if it's just, you have something, you're maintaining it, you're repairing it. It's staying in sort of a similar continued use, you know, you wouldn't need to go back to DOT for that.
And you're not moving the location of your driveway or anything like that?
No.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay with that?
Okay, am I blacktopping the 30 feet or no? Just leave it as?
No, 30 feet from the edge of pavement in 30 feet. As long as everybody else is okay with the millings for the remainder of it. My only concern would be that first 30 feet.
Seth, one, one question. Do you talk about the apron going into his parking lot?
Whatever he's using for access, whatever that width is.
Okay.
So a car goes to pull out and then it's doing its wheels because it's in these millings. That's why on driveways, we want that first 30 feet paved.
Okay.
After that 30 feet, if you're less than 4%, it can be gravel, but that first 30 feet, and it's also?
I think it's blacktopped pulling in there. You know, there's a curb, there's the, the apron, you come off and it's blacktopped for a little bit, and then it turns to?
That's gotta be verified. You need the first 30 feet.
Right, well, I, it's not 30 feet, but I mean?
Well, that's what you'll need as part of this, in my opinion.
Okay.
So it's not the whole width of the property, it's just the apron going into the park?
Whatever he uses for access onto the state highway.
Okay, thank you.
Whatever those limits are.
Okay.
And the rationale for that?
A bond should be posted for that. I mean, that doesn't necessarily have to hold, you know, you can post a bond for that, so. It's too late in the year now to do it.
Yeah.
And the rationale for that is just not, you know, not to kick up gravel and dirt and bring it out onto the state highway or any highway.
I understand that.
And then the other thing is, were you, were you working with the board of health as far as your water and sewer goes?
Yes.
Okay.
We're like right down to, they're just waiting for water samples, pretty much.
Okay, good.
What's the second floor gonna be?
I don't know yet. I don't know if we're gonna, you know, make it part of it down the road or make it. I have no clue. Probably vacant, empty.
Is that what it is now?
I have no clue. I'm just taking it back over as of the beginning of this year, pretty much. There was other people running it.
Okay.
Just going nowhere.
I think just to be clear, though, if he has any intentions to doing anything, that's another trip back to the planning board, so.
And yes, and he, you know, he, he did, there are some things that he has thought about doing in the future, but he understands that he would have to come back to the planning board for those things. We spoke about that today.
And that would also involve, you know, the health department too, as far as any changes to water and sewer?
And then I would just like to, on the phone today, I was, I was speaking with Walter, and he was explaining that he's also gonna put a split rail? Walter, and he was explaining that he's also gonna put a split rail fence to demarcate the parking lot because he had to do a septic, am I correct about that? Had to add, put a new septic field in, so he doesn't want any cars driving on the grass area that's outside of the gravel, so he's gonna put a split rail fence there. Um, and then also, there's an enclosure currently shown, uh, garbage enclosure currently shown on the site plan. He plans to, um, enclose that with the same material that he's using, fence it, but, and, and make it the same material that he's using on the siding of the structure, so it matches. Um, and both of those things, he's gonna provide on a, um, as-built plan for us when, when he does it. And that's in the conditions.
So, on, on reviewing some of the conditions in our resolution, the first one is submission of final elevations for the left side and rear of the building, do we want him to come back to us, or do we simply want him to submit that to ARC, and the condition would be their approval of those elevations?
Yes, so he, yeah, so basically, yeah, we'll go back to them, but I think they, they basically approved what it looked like, he just didn't have them in drawings.
Okay. Oh, so, so it is approved?
Yeah, they approved it already, but they didn't, he couldn't get the drawings because their architect.
Understood.
I was just changing the siding, you know, and they just, I didn't realize that you needed, you know, drawings of that.
Got it.
Sorry.
Okay, no. Any, any other questions or comments by anybody?
So, we're going to fill potholes and not cover the entire parking lot with millings? Like, what is on the table for us to, to look at?
Well, I think.
Let me just ask this question, as far as the parking, have you reviewed the parking, has got adequate parking, so?
There's plenty of parking, it's not striped, but there's, it's a big, uh, large lot.
So how, I mean, are, is it like ex, excess parking?
Yes, there'll be excess parking.
That we don't have to worry about making sure that they're striped and make sure that he has enough?
Correct, there's plenty of parking out there. And, and, I mean, I think, he came here, um, I think he was told to add the, add the handicap ramp by his architect, and he could have literally just changed out because it, it's still an operating business, but he decided to put the handicap ramp, which sent him into site plan approval, which sent him on his path that has, has.
Spiraled.
Spiraled quite a bit, and I think that, um, you know, what I had suggested was that maybe Brendan and I could have a separate conversation with him, or maybe go out there and sort of help him figure out the best way to manage his, his parking area as far as like what needs to be shown with the, with the handicap parking, how many spaces he needs, because I'm not sure if he really needs, I, I don't know if you were planning to do two spaces or one space?
I was told it was two.
Yeah, I think, I was gonna tell you, I think you should do two.
Wouldn't that area have to be paved in order to properly stripe it?
Well, I think we were thinking we could sign it, um, and use one of the, you know, sort of the bumper stops, you know, and like make that blue, and then sign it, and then put it right in front of where the ramp is currently, 'cause he, he just added the handicap ramp, so he put the spaces right in front there.
If you're comfortable, okay.
There is an existing site plan, so this is just an amendment to the existing?
Correct, well, there's no actual site plan, so he actually did a, a survey site plan, new survey site plan, but the existing business had been around for a while, and there was no existing site plan for it, it was Tina's Bar and Restaurant. Um, so, he's, he literally was just, I guess, because of the liquor license, he decided to turn it into a cafe, and it's probably gonna be a cafe that's operational only till six PM at night. Um, so it's slightly different hours and slightly different type of business, but literally, doing food service just like was there before.
What about lighting?
So, there is lighting currently, um, there's a lighting currently on the parking lot, and then there was this, um, previously there had been in the back, a, I guess a volleyball, sand volleyball court, or what was going to be sand light, and there's lighting there as well that, that reaches out to the parking area.
Okay.
But if there's no site plan, how are we approving an amended site plan? Wouldn't we just be approving a site plan?
Well, I mean, I guess so technically, although it was, yeah, there's no existing site plan on, on record, so yeah, it would just be a site plan. Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Looks to me like the second, uh, um, condition, uh, may need to get updated to be all parking, including handicap parking, as we're gonna have to review that based on what they come up with in the discussion between, uh, Brendan and Scott, I would think.
The condition right now is that, that final review and approval of the handicap parking area and signage by, by the Towns Traffic Consultant, so we'll make sure that Brendan is okay with whatever is placed out there for the, the handicap.
Right, well, I'm saying that I think that it's probably gonna, after you get done with your discussions about what, what the overall parking is gonna be, that may, that'll need to be settled before this is done.
So we can also just take out the word handicapped, and then it's a review of just parking?
Yeah, okay? And that would include the thirty foot paving requirement that Scott mentioned, right?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking about, yes.
Good.
And I guess I just mentioned one other thing, that there, he's placing the sign there, it's gonna be a sign for the restaurant, but it's gonna be placed, there's a, um, I guess it's a telephone pole or a utility pole right next to the structure, right? Like, and, and there's, the sign's gonna be off of that pole, like, one of the, ones it hangs off, like, so there's actually no, because otherwise, I think you'd be, um, maybe dealing, you know, getting involved in the right of way, with, where the sign would normally be.
Okay, and lighting?
Is there any specific approval?
Um, no, 'cause I think you own that, right? You thought, you own that pole, yeah.
Okay.
Um, lighting, there's lighting on this pole and, um, for the parking lot. There's existing lighting there.
Any other questions or comments by board members or professionals? Uh, so, I will read through the resolution of site plan approval. Name of site plan, Emma's Cafe. Name of applicant, Walter Leverich. Location, forty eighty-one Route fifty-two. Whereas the above referenced applicant applied to the Town of East Fishville Planning Board for an amend, for a site plan approval, for a proposed thirty seat cafe in an existing bar restaurant, and whereas the applicant is proposing to add an ADA accessible ramp to the building and relocate the entrance to the building, and whereas the applicant received ARC approval on November ninth, twenty twenty-one, subject to the submission of final elevations for the left side and rear of the building, and whereas the site would have sufficient parking capacity, whereas the applicant will demarcate two handicap parking spaces with signage located directly in front of the entrance to the proposed handicapped ramp, whereas the action is considered a type-two action under SEACR, and no further SEACR reviews required, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board approves the amended, the site plan titled Restaurant Renovation at Emma's Cafe, prepared by Samuel F. Vera, Architect PC, dated June tenth, twenty twenty-one, with the following conditions: Submission of the final elevations for the left side and rear of the building, as noted by Ed, final review and approval of parking and signage by the Towns Traffic Consultant. Number three, applicant to provide fenced refuse enclosures using siding material to match cafe siding. Number four, applicant to show split rail fence and garbage enclosures on final as-built plan. Were there any other conditions? If not, then be it.
Thirty, we got the thirty foot paving?
Um, we.
That's part of the parking.
Assume that that's encompassed within the final approval of the entire parking by our traffic consultant.
We can just add that final review and approval of, of parking, we could do comma, apron, thirty foot apron.
Right, 'cause that just speaks to handicap, doesn't it?
Uh, we, we eliminated the word handicap.
Oh, okay, alright.
And, Michelle, on the first one, um, do we need to say something like submission of final elevations in accordance with the ARC?
Sure.
Uh, approval?
Yeah.
Because I wanna make, if there, if the elevations are different than what the ARC was expecting, we need to make sure.
Okay, that's perfect.
So we can add apron.
I got it, I added, so I added number two, I said final review and approval of parking, thirty foot apron, and signage by the Towns Traffic Consultant.
All sound good so far? Be it further, be it further resolved, within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify, oh, I'm sorry, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Lori G.
Aye.
Craig Arco.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
John Eichman, I'm an aye. It's approved unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate what you're doing out there.
Good luck.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Tucker Trail subdivision, Route fifty-two, Route two sixteen.
I have a, uh, a hard drive, we have the, uh, I brought my own computer, 'cause I got an email saying that.
Yeah, your computer's over there.
Is it Wi-Fi?
You can just Wi-Fi it, so I can show you.
Oh, I'm not, that's a good question.
Put this stuff up on the screen for free delay. They're free.
Okay.
I thought it was Michelle, I didn't really confirm, I just assumed.
Never assume.
From the odd couple years.
Whatever, we're taking a much harder stance.
No, it's a, it's.
The hill?
Yeah, from the hill. It's the, it's not the, it's not connecting to the, or to the, to the network. I connected to the network.
I can see the paper plan, okay. It's a discussion, right?
That's a good point.
Yes.
Um, we, we can see the, the paper version fine, if that's helpful to you.
It's, it's up to you, I just, you have time.
The actual internet. Can you see it okay?
I appreciate, I appreciate the full-size version, it's great.
We'll give it one more shot.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not connecting, so, let's try and go with a paper copy.
Okay, that, that'll be just fine, no problem.
Back to the old days.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're just old-fashioned guys.
Good evening, folks. This is the Tucker Trail subdivision, it's a six-lot subdivision, it's located at the intersection of two sixteen and fifty-two. Uh, we were before the planning board last month, uh, did an overall kind of idea in terms of the layout. Basically, it's five lots with, um, with access coming off of fifty-two, standard lots, and then we have one flat lot that goes to the back. Um, what we're proposing is basically kind of shared entry driveways, one and two, share the entry to eliminate the curb cuts on the state highway, then break off, uh, three and four, and then five and six. Um, so there's, you know, we're minimizing that curb cut out on the state highway. Um, we've petitioned the DOT, they've conceptually approved these locations, so, um, we've got that out of the way, we've went ahead and proceeded with, um, the Dutchess County Health Department, soils are out there, very permeable, it's, it's great stuff for septic systems, so we're pretty far along with them as well. We were before the board last time, uh, the board declared their intent to serve as lead agent, um, so I think our thirty days have passed, so barring any objection from any, um, involved or interested agency, um, we'd like to move to that particular point tonight, um, any other questions you may have, um, and then a potential for maybe going even to the next step, uh, which would be a hearing.
Any other changes to the plan, Mike, since we saw it last?
No, there may be some septic modifications and so forth based upon some comments, but the layout is, uh, the same as was when you saw it. You know, one of the reasons we have sixteen acres, but it's only a six-lot subdivision, and one of the reasons is there's a pretty significant wet one pond that exists in this area, so we're maintaining our separation, our buffers and things such as that, so, um, six is about all you're gonna get on, on this parcel.
You know, we kinda talked about the last time with regards to the, you know, where the driveways kinda join, and I, if you could just, uh, remind me, are two cars able to pass simultaneously, uh, entrance and exit of that, uh, entrance into the?
We, that was brought up at the last meeting, um, I think we provided a little bit of detail on the last set of plans, um, in fact, the DOT, um, they have standard details for individual driveways, not necessarily for kind of a shared entry like this, so, um, I'm waiting on them to tell us what you want, I mean, whether it's a little wider to allow for two passage, or one just has to wait back while the other one comes in or out, um, you know, it'll be subject to them, uh, giving a thumbs up, but, um, yeah, we're, we're currently working that out, kind of with them.
Yeah, I, I do think it is something that the DOT will, uh, resolve, I think the detail indicated that it was about fifteen feet in width, so not really wide enough for two cars to pass, uh, especially since they're gonna be approaching, you know, probably approaching it at an angle, uh, you know, to exit or enter, um, but I, I think that's the operation that they're going to want, not necessarily gonna want cars to, uh, pass, it's gonna, it should operate as a single driveway, that's, that's the intent of allowing, you know, that type of connection. So, would, you know, if there was a car in the driveway, and someone was pulling in, obviously the car would need to exit the driveway before another car could pull in, but that's the way it's set up.
And also, they have to provide some type of sight line where they come down, like if they're both coming down at the same time, to know that they're, you know what I'm saying? Where the property, uh, kind of, um, has the, uh, property line, you, you'd have to kind of protect from having landscaping there, so that if two cars come to join down at the bottom, coming from the dri, you know, each of the similar driveways.
I can't remember the, did you mention in your detail, but I think it was either eighteen or twenty feet back, something like that?
Yeah.
So I think there's, I mean, there's, you know, there's at least the length of a car where, where it's joining together, so, um, you, you should, you should be able to see a car.
So what's the final width gonna be of the driveway, the curb cut?
We showed it at fifteen feet.
Fifteen.
Okay, so, we're waiting on DOT, they've approved the locations of each, we just wanna whittle them down on making sure they're okay with the, the width.
Did you actually apply for a highway work permit?
What's that?
Did you apply for a highway work permit yet?
No, we have a letter which was provided to you.
Yeah, right, just, just a conceptual approval, right?
Yeah, we haven't even got to preliminary.
Yeah, right, so, I mean, the rest of it won't be resolved until, you know, they actually s- submit for, uh, a highway work permit to construct the driveway, and then, you know, the DOT will probably come in then and indicate, uh, that, that's when that'll be resolved.
I mean, to stay ahead of the curve, I mean, we went ahead and submitted, said this was an issue that was brought up, we'd like to kind of know, 'cause why not resolve it now, see before things get filed and approvals of details will be right, but we're a little ahead of ourselves.
So more like a proactive measure to?
Right, get it right now, right.
So the only thing I'd like to add, is we've seen in the past, you know, if these lots get sold to different people, and a lot on the left, they wanna build their driveway, and they build it, you know, wanna build it twelve foot wide, and then the next guy comes in, he wants to build his, you know, so, I think we just need to have a note that whoever comes first is responsible for putting that apron in, in its entirety, which means, which means it's gonna cross over that property line to some extent, whether imaginary between the end of the property and then within to the DOT right of way, you know, depending on what the dimensions are, but I know that can be problematic if not properly addressed up front.
I think we've done that before on a couple of these.
Well, we had that same case, in fact, Mike, it was on your, uh, what was it, Hope
Hopewell, Hopewell Enterprises. And I don't know if, if, if those, those maps were signed already, but there would have been a common driveway maintenance agreement there also, you know, for that. So I would assume it'd be the same type of language. But, you know, Scott is right. You know, the first, the first person in has to be, you know, responsible for building the whole thing. But then they have to be able to go on to the neighbor's property.
Right, so there's, there's, there's the point of construction and then there's the maintenance after the fact. Right? So what we did on, on Hopewell Enterprises is we showed basically a small little square. Because these, you know, don't split right into property. It gets very tight to make that radius to get in there before you hit the property line. So we'll show squares, which is basically an easement. It allows for future maintenance and so forth. We can also put provisions in there relative to who's responsible for what. You know, I had mentioned to the last time we were here. The first guy in the door or the first gal in the door is the one that gets responsible for building. That's the way it is, you know.
And it should just be clear on what, till what limit?
Yeah.
You know, what the limits.
Yeah, we're actually going to put a physical easement on the map. That's what we did with Hopewell Enterprises, like a little, like a little square. Just so to make sure it's clear that, you know, there's the ability for someone else going to property line and people aren't squabbling and so forth.
That, that should also help prevent having any landscaping put between the driveways. It would prevent the vision of another vehicle or a car coming in.
If that was the point, between the driveways.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. I mean, it gets into the picky un end of it, but it's, it's, it seemed to work on Hopewell Enterprises.
Okay. Any other questions or comments by board members?
Mike, I think we said this last time, but the realignment of 216 to 52, we think doesn't affect the, any of these parcels, right?
No, in fact, I had that discussion with the DOT rep. It actually helps this. If it's, if it's, if there's just a realignment, then. I'll do this. Here's 216. Here's 52. The realignment would come in here. So we're actually getting more separation from these driveways. If it's a roundabout, same thing. Likely it'd be in here and would slow, you know, traffic down. So it doesn't, any measure hurt this, it helps it.
Okay.
Do you have, can you tell from that plan, the distance from the existing Route 216 to that first common driveway?
Yeah, I actually had to mention how.
256.
256?
Yeah.
So if you look at that and, and the fact that if, in either option, an intersection or the roundabout, 216 would move further to the east, being further than that. I mean, I know we had some discussion about that roundabout. You know, there's certainly some potential that they might need to increase the length of like splitter islands. But I think in, in any case, that first driveway would be outside any requirement for a length of a splitter island there. I think that the driveway for the existing house that's there, the, the manor, I mean, that, that's going to have to be relocated regardless when, when whatever realignment's done at, at 216 and 52.
Because that comes in right at.
Yeah.
Right at that.
It's got, it's got to be, it's got to be realigned regardless. So this, this, this subdivision doesn't actually impact that. I mean, but, so I think, I think Mike is correct in what he's saying.
Other questions or comments?
Mike, one of our comments was that four, four to lots seem to have very limited backup areas as you come out of, you know, the garage. And it was pretty tight to the property lines. It's something you need to go look at and maybe move around the houses a little bit to give a little more backup room coming out of the garage.
Yeah, I mean, we tried to throw a 30 by 30 spot in there and then we put radiuses and might tighten up. We have the room to do it, so. I know one of the comments I had previously was to allow better, you know, kind of a bigger, more reasonable backyard.
Because they got to come in and then they got to go back out and. I just know I've seen this before, that it's, you know, tight and it doesn't really work. So just look at it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think we have the room to, to make it work, so.
Mike, what's the length of the longest driveway?
The length of the longest driveway is Lot 3, which is from, it's kind of a flat lot.
Right.
It's really not super tight. But I was saying this is the.
You know, we need pulls.
50 feet, yeah, so you're probably above 100 feet.
How many?
I'm sorry. 50 feet, one, two, three, four, five, 100 feet.
Because I think anything over 400 feet requires a pull-off.
Yeah, that's, we don't show that, but you're right, that makes sense.
Any other questions or comments for Mike? Okay. I think tonight we need to declare lead agency. So I'll accept a motion to declare lead agency.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that carries. And we can set a public hearing, Mike. Our next meetings are on December 21st and January 11th. Does one, one of those work better for you?
I was looking at the dates. I, I think there's adequate time between now and the end of the month. And then getting the 30-day in there for December, we can make that happen. So the comments weren't off the wall. So I think they can make December work.
Okay, got it. So I'll accept a motion to establish a public hearing for the project for our December 21st, 2021 meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Carries.
I oppose.
Okay, you both. So the next items on the agenda are sketch plans. First one being Robinson Garden Plaza.
On this one, I really would like to get the overhead work. For this one, I think I'd like to say the overhead too. While this thing is thinking. So this is Robinson Garden Plaza, also known as Nashwa Plaza. This is located at the northeast intersection of Robinson Lane and Lake Walton Road. Everybody should be fairly familiar with it. Tonight with us is Mr. Ferris Sprellie. He's actually the owner of the plaza itself. And Mr. Ishar Majek, who is involved with the pharmacy, runs the space of the pharmacy on, on the right hand on Wright Community. Again, I'm assuming that everybody is somewhat familiar with the site and, you know, the tendency plus or minus being in the area. One of the things that happened when COVID hit. Pulse MD is a tenant of, of the facility. And what they did was they decided, they, they, you know, allowed for COVID testing. The way it initially started was people would come in, they would work their way around the back of the plaza, and there would be a line that would form. Right here. When people would, they would get their information, maybe get a test. And then they sit in a parking lot with a sign on a car waiting to see if they had COVID or not. That was really kind of at the height of when this all went down. There were some concerns about that presence being there in front of the bank. The bank wasn't overly enthused with having that in front of their bank. And, and to note that that drive-through is for the bank as well. So it was creating some issues with the bank and things such as that. So it's changed where they've actually moved it to the rear of the facility, of, of the plaza. So effectively, you come in and you wait here. You drive up, there's a couple of parking spaces in the rear. People come out, change the information, take the test, and then you wait for that, that quick test to happen. In order to improve, you know, we all thought this thing was going to go away quicker than it has. And as, as I've seen, actually, apparently the rates are back up again. So we don't know when this is going to end. The idea was to create kind of more of a streamlined situation where we would add on the west end, another drive-through, okay? The space that is currently also rented by Pulse MD is the very end unit that Dunkin' Donuts used to be. So the idea was that they would have this drive-through here, where they would be able to work with people and take their information and take their testing. And then they would push to a spot, you know, over here for waiting. And, but we didn't want to take the drive-through away from the bank. So the drive, the new drive-through, a new, one of the two new drive-throughs would be located on the side of that. So this proposed conditions plan shows that effectively, you know, in terms of what's happening. You'll see that the existing drive-through is here and the proposed is shaded in. The impact of that is, is certainly, you'll see up here, there's some green space. In fact, the plan's not totally accurate because there's a huge condenser units there for air conditioning and so forth. But there would be a loss of a few parking spots, as well as some of the green space in here in order to make this work. I think there's probably some additional thought we could do here relative to channelizing some of the traffic and so forth. That's, that's number one. That's, that's probably the easier of the two. The second issue, and again, it relates more to the COVID issue, is on the far end is the existing community pharmacy. And recently, they have actually expanded not only to their end space, but they've actually expanded to the space next to that. People more comfortable not getting out of their car, going into the pharmacy to get their meds, things such as that. So the idea, obviously, the only practical space at all was to provide for a drive-through area on the back left-hand corner here that'll allow some queuing to occur here, but allow to service these people at a service window. Now, just leaving it at that creates an issue because there's certain traffic patterns that exist on this site. And what it does, it kind of creates a problem. So we provided at least some, some relatively light detail relative to the differing traffic patterns that would occur here. In order to make this work, we would think that this would be a one-way in. So ultimately, and I don't know if anybody's been out of there, coming out of there, quite frankly, is not the greatest spot if you're taking a left. People move pretty quick along that route there. I don't think the DOT would be ultimately opposed to that. And then this would be the main entrance and access, which would funnel everybody to the lit intersection. Yeah, it's not as convenient as coming down through here and, and taking that left here, but at least what it does is pushes people to a controlled intersection. All right? One of the things that we certainly knew about was the potential of the queuing here. And I think it was mentioned in Brendan's letter. You know, we show a couple of cars there. You know, what's to stop this from occurring? Depends on how quick they can get people through. We do propose this as being one-way and then also having two lanes of travel here. So if it does get backed up, people can push to the right. I did speak to the client prior to walking in here and there's some thought about maybe doing some reconfiguration here to try and get a third lane in, to allow for traffic continuing in this direction. But this is really borne by a necessity of need, not, not want. And that's, that's effectively the pitch. We understand that there's some considerations here regarding traffic flow. In fact, in speaking to Mr. Sprella, limiting this to a one-way access here is probably not the greatest thing for these businesses. When this project was initially done, if you know Summerlin across the street, Summerlin is actually set back. And there's more parking in the front than there's gravel in the back. So there's definitely a push and people tend to park in the front there. This was done in a way at the time to try and eliminate that big scar of pavement in front of, you know, the, you know, the building. Push the building up, eliminate your park and try to push people around the back. Again, I can tell you, stopping by and going to Tomas and a couple of other night spots on the weekend, I, the first spot I look for is along the front here. That's just the way it is. And if there's nothing there, then I trail around to the back. So even though the back is being used, it's certainly not being used to its optimum. So in, 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 in this manner, this would actually push more people to the back parking lot. Again, access to these, you know, there's two, there's two access ways. I'm sorry, Laurie. There's two access ways that actually run front to back there, okay? That allow people through. There's been some talk about possibly even closing those up because if you don't close them up all the way, then it's considered outside dining. You know, unfortunately, we're still dealing again with these issues. But that's, that's the idea that we're looking for feedback from you tonight.
So I have to ask why you're not putting the drive-through on the back of the building versus the side of the building where the pharmacy is?
For example, here?
Yeah.
We could.
There's parking spaces there, right? Are there?
Yeah, there is parking here. We'd have to take this and, and move this basically to here. I don't know what we gain here, maybe another two or three spots queuing-wise. I mean, his whole operation is back in these two spots right here. So, you know, maybe that's something, you know, we got to look at.
But it keeps the travelway on the side of the building clear is what it, it doesn't, you've got a lot more room for an escape.
So if, let's say we put it here, right? Is that what we're talking?
Yeah.
So then the backup of the queuing track would be like this.
See, I'm even thinking though, traffic patterns aside, if you were to put an addition onto the side of that building, how does that affect egress for emergency travel also? Like I don't, I, I can't see obviously the distances there, but, you know, you're talking fire truck, things like that, that would have to pass by there. And let's say, in fact, that there's vehicles there at that, at that time. Then what happens?
Right. Well, again, we, we, this right now is two, this right now is two-way, as it exists. You come in here and you can roll through this and this, or you can, I mean, it's, it's two-way. So the idea would be to close that off, make that one-way in one direction. So, I mean, we can run templates and so forth, but the idea that if there's room for two-way traffic, there's probably room for double one-way.
So one of the other things to consider with that, though, Mike, is that, that the aisle that's right directly behind the building. In, in, in the proposed scenario, when I looked at it, you're still having that to be two-way. So if you leave the right side of the building to have one-way access in, anyone who comes down that aisle towards, you know, towards the right side of the building. There is no, there is no way, they, they have to turn, they actually have to do a U-turn to get back the other direction. Unless you change the aisle, the rear aisle, the, you know, the second bay of parking. If you change the configuration of that and allow the circulation to go around the other way. So I think in Laurie's idea, you know, you, you, if you did that, then you'd still be able to maintain two-way traffic on, on the, on the, on the right side of the building, which I think is important. And I do, I do think, again, we don't know what the world brings to us, right? So, you know, maybe only, you might only expect one or two cars to queue. But then what happens if it gets opened up for testing or, you know, or the use changes? And now, you know, we have a drive-through that, that can be problematic.
I wouldn't even queue it on the side of the building. I would queue it across the top island.
The back.
And bring it around, right?
Right.
Like, like this?
Yeah.
I, I can't see that drawing, but from here, but you're saying in the, in the back.
Top around.
Yeah.
You know, from the top back parking lot, coming back around towards the building. So like if this is, if this is the building like this, the park, the back parking lot here.
Above the island.
Okay.
Coming around from the top.
Yeah, I, I, I get that. And, and what happens is one of the reasons I really didn't mess around is back aisles because when this was put in, based, you know, you can see the way the, the, the parking spaces are skewed, just, you know, because it's a one-way aisle there. Not that anybody uses it that way.
I was just going to say.
Nobody parks back there.
It's kind of like.
There's nobody parks back there.
Parks in that back lot.
You're absolutely correct. So, so, I mean, we can stop people from coming in here. I mean, at some point you get here, do not enter. So what happens is it filters these people through and back. I mean, there's ways to control this traffic so people don't push this way so you end up with a U-turn, you know? You know, additional, maybe some pavement markings and things like that. I think we can probably work out the logistics on that. But, you know, that, that, that is the essence of, of, you know, looking for.
And I think more activity in the back, because there's so little, would be much more effective. Because you said yourself, and I think the majority of people, we all know the plaza. Anybody that goes to it, our tendency is never to park in the back.
No, it always goes.
For me, actually, and I'm not speaking for everybody, but.
Laurie, Laurie, with your concept, though, so the drive, the drive-through would be on the side of the building, but it would be accessed the other, no, okay.
No, I would put the drive-through, I would put the, move the drive-through to the back of the building and I would queue up along that island and down around into the drive-through and out.
And then, and then maintain the, the current two-way access on the right side of the building, right?
Absolutely.
Maintaining this right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd maintain exactly the traffic pattern you have today. Well, not that one down there, but the one up above.
Existing.
All right, so this guy comes here, they're waiting to get into here, but you can still zip around back in here, make a move out this way. Okay. Make a move out this way. Okay.
That, that corner there is super tight. What's the distance?
It is tight.
I mean, I, I, if a car's coming and I have my truck, I have to stop and let the car come.
You're talking about right here.
Same thing when you're making even the right off of, um, 376 into there, it's extremely tight if another car is coming out. Because it's a very tight corner in both.
You're right.
Have to ask another question.
What am I to say?
I, can, can you describe again for me then how the other drive-through works? Can we, can you walk through for the COVID testing in the bank?
Do you know how it currently works?
No.
Okay. So, um, there was a time when people, whether they came in this entrance or this entrance, they would work their way down through here, there would be a queue right here. The people from, um, um, uh, the urgent care. Urgent care, right? They're right in this unit here, the old Dunkin' Donuts. So people would park here. Uh, the way it works too is I don't, you, you call up, you make a, 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 a virtual appointment and they tell you, okay, you have the symptoms, come at this time. So then you schedule, it's not like you just show up. You have to schedule a time to be there. And maybe that's how they kind of deal with the queuing and the traffic and all that kind of stuff. Volume, thank you. So, um, you, you come through here, um, they, they get your license, they, they give you the test and then effectively they give you a number and you wait in one of these spots for, uh, the rapid results, right? And then you're on your way. That was an issue for the bank, which is this guy right here. So, um, what they did is they changed it all now where you come to the back here, the wrong way on this runway run here. There's a stop here, you get pulled in, they, they kind of give you one of these. And then you wait here and the same thing occurs. You actually, once you take your test, you leave and then typically people are parked over here to wait for the results of the rapid, which is like a 20, 25 minute test. Um, it's, it's not, um, optimal, but that's the way they figured on making the bank happy, right? And I think that's kind of worked up to this point. So, um, again, if this thing was, we all knew it was going to be over, we wouldn't be here. Um, the idea is to install the drive-through here, there's not a window there for the bank. Um, it's just, um, you do your business, you put it in the sleeve, sucks it in, microphone, that's it. So the idea would be to install another drive-through right next to it. Same look, same size, same, same aesthetics and so forth, um, where that would be the bank, okay? So they could still do drive-through business. And the one close now would go from the bank to urgent care and they would have a window. So the window would open, how can I help you? And then, so it's just a little more streamlined rather than people coming out of the, the medical facility and, and greeting people and walking back inside because that's a lot of what happens.
So the urgent care would get the window, the bank would maintain the business similar, but moving their space out.
One of them.
So their, their business wouldn't change except for the position of where they'll be.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So if I come in the, uh, the east side, the east entrance and go along the front of the building, uh, under the new routine, uh, then I'm going to have to go back to the back parking lot, do a U-turn to find my way into the drive-through?
They're gonna have to do a, 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 you know, a U here to get in or come around and do this.
Well, it'll still be two ways, so they could go around the other side too, right?
Right.
Right. Typically, that's kind of what goes down. If you're somewhat familiar with it, you're gonna, you're gonna go this way. You know, unfortunately, people have to, over time, they kind of learn.
Well, and probably signage would help that, right?
They have cones up now and, I mean, it works, but it's not great.
I think one of the other comments that we had though, on, on that, uh, west end at the outside of that, I guess what would be the bank drive-through, it would certainly need, you know, some type of channelization. I think on the planet it just shows it being open, but, right?
Well, I did mention that at the beginning of my speech.
You did.
Yeah, like curbing or something.
Yeah, so we, whether it's painted or, or curbing or something, yes, this needs to be defined a little bit better, so, um, it's not so stark.
Probably need some sort of sign to say this one's the bank, this one's the Pulse MD or whatever.
I'm sure the Pulse MD wouldn't mind taking some of the deposits from the bank.
Unfortunately, I think with this COVID thing, I think they're doing all right.
So you won't have an exit lane for the inner one?
An exit lane for the inner one?
For the inner drive-through, it's, there's gonna be no way for a car to escape once they're, if they're blocked in, right?
Um, you're talking about here?
Well, if they're queued up anywhere along the building there.
You mean if there's a second car in the drive-through?
So if you have, let's say, four cars lined up in both drive-throughs, if I am car number two, I can't get out. I have to wait to be able to go forward. I'm just saying, there's gonna be no exit lane, I'm assuming.
Oh, like a, like an emergency lane?
Yeah.
Escape lane, right? And I guess the other thing too is right, right now, the bank facility is actually where? On, on the wall of the building?
Bank's on the outside.
No, but the, the bank isn't located there. It's an internal unit, right?
The, 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 the. Where the Dunkin' Donuts used to be is on the outside wall. The bank's next one in.
Right, so, so, but where, where, where is the, uh, like the, the ATM or the, you know, the, the, the?
That's all. You, you walk into the front of their building or their, their space and there's an ATM in the vest to go before you go into the back.
So they don't have one at the drive-through?
This is just the back queue too.
The, the drive-through is just for like, uh, deposits and stuff?
The back queue.
But, but that, where is the, 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 you know, the thing that takes the tubes, that's on, uh, how, where would that be? That's on the building itself?
Goes up and over.
No, I know, but, but I, I mean, also just my memory of looking at the drawing, I can't see it from where I am right now, but.
Come on, take a look.
It's okay, but the, uh, there's not much separation between those two lanes, right?
Uh.
You, you're gonna have to put a, you know, there's gonna have to be something there to, to house the bank, um.
Yeah, there'll, there'll be a, some kind of a separation wall or something, yes.
Okay, I just wanna, wanna make sure there's enough room because yeah, I don't, I don't think, someone commented there isn't really enough room to go in there and do a U-turn and come into the, you know, queue up for that. You really need to go on the right side of the building.
You, you could at that entrance though, have clear signs that say, go this way for the bank, go this way for, for the.
Right.
Uh, is it Pulse? I'm sorry. Yeah, Pulse.
So is this kind of rapid testing different from the kind of tests that you can purchase at, right at the pharmacy and do yourself at home? It's, it's a different test, a more sophisticated test?
That, that is, uh, those, that testing, it has to be done, uh, by a professional rather than now they have rapid testing, you can do it yourself, but they're not active. It's a waste of money for anybody, uh, for the population. It's something I wouldn't do.
Okay.
Well, and I think for some, depending on who, who your employer is, there's certain employers that are going to require you be tested on a routine basis now based on some changing federal regulations.
Okay, got it. Need an independent certification.
Yeah, it's gotta be an independent.
Makes sense.
And where it appears, uh, according to my doctor I had an appointment last Thursday, he said, after six months, you need, you're gonna need a boost depending on your blood type and your health condition. Somebody like myself, not sixty-three years old, never seen a hospital. So, uh, has to do with your blood type, a lot, a lot of research was done. Uh, and so it looks like this, uh, testing is going to remain. And, and he took it as a month per month, but it's a, it was for, just for a year. And it, it looks like he's staying, uh, and the bank is actually effective. Will it cause me to reduce the rent by $3,000 a month, so they'll leave me? So it gives them an opportunity to stay in the business. So I hope that if I can make an extra lane and where the sign is, take some more land to, to, uh, have more of a driving ability for emergency vehicles or not, you know, I'm willing to, to, uh, spend my money to try to sell my house because of reducing all, all the rent. I was forced to sell my house to, to keep the property underwater.
You know, obviously this, this has been a financial impact for a lot of people and a lot of business and so forth. But I know, I've been here to test twice. I mean, I've got my shots and all that stuff, but you know, you, you don't know. And I feel more comfortable myself going to a facility that I think people know what they're doing rather than pulling a test out of CVS, you know, and I just, I think that's the way most people think.
Got it.
So we could do some wiggling with the drive-throughs. Signage, um, make sure we have the width. We'll play with the one on the far side because it has some implications relative to the internal layout of his pharmacy too. Access points, there's a door on the back and things like that. And then, um, come back, have further, have further discussion. Makes sense?
I'd just like to clarify, what we've decided is absolutely off the table, so we're all on the same page. So I think we've all decided that there's no way that this can be one-way, this direction. Um, I'm concerned about the two, I don't know how you, I just don't know how you do that, like how you, there's two lines of traffic coming and then you're only going into one lane. I, just makes me anxious looking at it, um, just my, in my experience with drive-throughs. Um, this is tight. I've been through the site a number of times. You can actually put a light above each one to tell when, to tell cars when they can go and when they can't.
But the problem is that if you're sitting, you don't want to be there anymore, you waited a half an hour, some test is taking too long, people are not going to pay attention and, and that's the reality of it. And, and I think that people going to the bank are not going to be psyched because their transactions really quick. If they have to wait half an hour to wait for someone to move out of the way because they're waiting for a rapid test to come back or whatever it is, you know, I, I just, I waited there, I know, for a while. Um, one time, you know, sat there quite, quite a bit and, um, there's not really.
Parking spot, you mean, right?
No, I was waiting in line. I was waiting in line, yeah.
There's also times where you're testing, you could test four people in one car. But I'll have to sit there and wait for a pretty significant amount of time before you're, but then how do you make a left out of the Pulse MD drive-through across another drive-through? On the, on the new one, yeah.
You mean a right?
You can't. You'd have to go this way.
You'd be coming into oncoming traffic across people pulling out and you would, you'd never be able to see.
You're talking about this right here, this movement?
Yeah, I.
Well, I think part of what we talked about, I think that, you know, this one way is off the table, so certainly there'd be opportunity to take a left here.
But it's almost like you'd have to make that.
Well, we could also post signage here saying no right-hand turn.
Or just put a little curb.
Right.
I mean, those are things we'll take a deeper look at, you know?
What's that?
Expand the, with more, more pavement, uh, moving, taking more of the land, adding some parking. So it, it, it's ample, uh, space to move around. I, I, I don't prefer to do that because it loses its beauty, but you have to in order to accommodate, you know, what's going on with dependency, uh, which one do you take? Survival or beauty?
All right, my crazy idea time. I, is it possible? This is crazy, I know, but is it possible to take these two and instead of putting them side by side, put one towards the front and one towards the back, separate from the, so almost like its own little kiosk? And then have the cars queuing in opposite directions? Does that make sense what I'm saying? I, I think you have the space there to do that.
But then you'd be on the passenger side.
I think we could talk, I think what we need to do maybe is you need to meet with maybe.
That's what I'm saying for the bank one.
Oh, you're saying the P.
And they can just install it on the other side.
How do you have a drive-through?
We'll just figure out if any, what can even potentially work and what can't.
Well, I think, I think we have, you understand the reason why we're here. And I think we have, uh, a lot of ideas floating around and if we could certainly work something out, it sounds like the board is amiable to it. But yeah, we don't want to create a condition that creates, you know, a problem or worse than a problem. And I think too, when you were, when you were there taking, um, the test, you know, I was there too. And at the beginning, when this thing was really going wild, um, you know, you would literally, the line would be out to here.
Oh, it would go all the way back out, all the way around and back out onto 376.
That was, that was a peak, uh, peak season if you want to say, you know, just the way it was. I mean, you know, who knows what, what tomorrow brings, but I, I would hope we wouldn't see it to that degree, but, um.
Has Pulse weighed in on the logistics of the window for testing? Has Pulse, MD, the drive-through, have they weighed in on the logistics of testing through a window?
Uh, uh, the, the way, uh, the way it was described to me is where the current drive-through is there, is to put in a sliding door because the window is not so safe for the employees, strip and balls. Uh, the, for the window. Because one person comes close, one person is too far, one person is, uh, too skinny and too short, one person is too fat and, and too thick to go through the window, can't reach, short arms. So they, he asked me, which I did not discuss with him, a sliding door. So this way it's safe for everybody and everybody else could go to the car, do the test, come back, move, move that vehicle and wait for the, for the next one to come in.
So they're still going to be coming out into, people are going to be walking out into traffic?
They'll be walking out to the, to the.
Right, out of the car.
Right, but.
You come, the window is right there, the car is stopped.
Right, but that's assuming that only the driver is being tested.
Exactly.
That's how it's going to happen.
Mike, let me ask you, how many, is there a bulk table on there? How many parking spaces are required and how?
Uh, I, I don't have that on here, um, well.
Because it was a sketch, so it just, I didn't have a problem. There was over 200 of those spots on here.
That's not a bulk table to the right of that. That's not a bulk table.
It is, but I don't have it.
Yeah.
I don't think parking is a huge deal.
Well, I don't think so either, so I'm, I'm looking at like, uh, five guys over in. Plopped the five guys in the middle of a parking lot over by the cinema there. So if you look at the rear of the site, you have one-way traffic right now to the rear of the site where you got the, the Evergreens, I guess. That's already one direction, so I mean, you have a ton of queuing length there. So what if the owner thought a little bit bigger and maybe used some of that area and put another building in, so to speak? Not just a kiosk, but something a little more substantial to away with 20 or 30 or 40 parking spaces. And whether it's COVID now or a coffee kiosk later or whatever, but it's already one direction. You got a ton of parking you don't already, you don't already use. Question is in the short term whether the health provider can operate out of, so to speak, like a little satellite spur.
Couldn't you do that with the bank too?
This is not their normal operation anyway.
Plenty of banks around here have islands. The credit union has one over by Arlington High School where their drive-through is on the opposite side of their parking lot. I think same with in Poughkeepsie. The bank can absolutely have their vacuum thing on an island somewhere. It doesn't have to be attached to the building.
It's like you got all that space to.
So you can just use the existing drive-through for the COVID testing or whatever it may become. And then the bank can have its kind of island drive-through.
Except it's the COVID that could have the long queue length.
Just a thought to.
I mean, we, we can have that discussion with them. I don't, I'm not overly familiar with the logistics of what it takes and how many testers they have and all that, people and, you know. We'll get a little bit better handle on that to see if that makes any sense here.
I mean, you think about it, that, that, uh, medical building, I know they expanded, but originally it was for walk-in patients, right? It wasn't for COVID five years ago. It was just for walk-ins.
So that's the urgent, urgent.
The urgent care.
Walk, uh, walk-in patients.
Right. Now you've expanded due to the testing.
He asked me to do, to utilize it to do the.
I get that, I get that. So if the testing is that potentially a bigger thing, maybe it pays to put up another building in the back to, to facilitate the testing. Because you'll have a ton of queue length over there and it doesn't disrupt everything else.
I think, I think just the one thing on that, um, you know, that.
And you could always change the use in the future, you know?
You know, I, I think we're looking at a plaza here, you know, and, and money counts, economics count. We're looking at a plaza that's not fully rented on the bottom floor and we have nothing on the top floor. And, you know, he's kind of just, kind of scraping it, so to put the funds in to another building may be a little heavier than putting another drive-through. I mean, we'll, we'll look at it, but, um, you know, stuff, stuff costs money.
Well, what about a temporary space for them?
Like a, like a trailer or something?
Yeah, in that back lot, just to accommodate the fact that potentially you could come and go. In that back lot, just to accommodate the fact that potentially you could come and go. I mean, I'm just-
To be honest, as a planner, I'm quite concerned about if this changes use because if that ends up being a Dunkin' Donuts at some point, and that's, that's a disaster waiting to happen.
Oh, and that's what, what I was going to say. We're talking about this now and then what it could be, you know, five, 10 years from now, and I'm not going to say that the tenant won't be there, but you could be like setting yourself up for a disaster here when you could just temporarily possibly put out, like, uh, you know, they have these nicer, you know, trails. I'm, I, I know that in a lot of job sites and stuff where they set up temporary testing, you know, for big jobs like in the city and stuff, they're in, they're in trailers, so.
Yeah, I think Pete even suggested a shed, just a large shed, you run heat and electric to it and a sliding door in it and just put it on that back, that back lot.
Yeah, if it's a question of economics, it, and again, I'm just kind of peppering these things out there because I'm saying, you know, if you were to make some of these designs pretty much with the intent for what they're using it for, it could, you know, counter, counteract what you could be using it for down the road or cause additional issues. So if you had that type of situation where all of a sudden they've had this, you know, rise in necessity to have this, it's mostly traffic. It's not really the necess, you know, they, they don't need more space. They need to accommodate the amount of car traffic they have to get the testing done. Because I was there by that, at the height, it was crazy because the cars looped all the way around. So you're basically taking space that's completely underutilized or not being utilized at all, putting that, that type of trailer which they have, you know, or like Scott said, some type of dwelling that could be, you know, have heat and, and, and water, whatever's necessary for them to do.
For the short term, and then over time you may decide that he wants to build something permanent there.
Right. And it, it mitigates the actual cost of some of this other stuff because, you know, at that stage, I, I don't know what the permitting is for something like that. But I'm sure it's a lot less than starting to get into a process of adding on to the building, so.
Yeah, I, I, I guess two things. I, I don't, from a temporary structure standpoint, in terms of, is it something that's viable for their use in terms of what they do? Can they u-
Yeah, you'd have-
I don't know that offhand. I gotta check that out. Number two is, is, yeah, you know, I figured you'd let you say it before I said it, but anything that was allowed here relative to a drive-through, that's for this use. I mean, yeah, Starbucks, this place, everything goes away in two years and Starbucks submits a building permit, you, they gotta come back here if they want the drive-through.
Yeah.
So you can, you can limit your approval to allow for just this particular use and have to come back here to make sure. You have control over that. So I'm not overly concerned and I don't think the board should be either relative to seeing something like that because it's a completely different animal.
But I'm also thinking from the standpoint of you're going to be able to alleviate, like obviously there was some discord between the bank and the testing facility. So now you're going to take that traffic and you're going to move it away from the bank and they're going to get their little domain back, so to speak, and you're going to utilize that back parking area for something that potentially could, you know, solve both problems.
Both driveways are two-way. The, uh, on the back where the parking is, it's a two-way drive.
Not according to this plan.
Yeah.
It is, there's-
I'm understanding currently the way it goes.
No, there's two-
The way back is one-way.
In the back.
Yeah.
Have diagonal parking.
Second back-bay.
If you go to the pharmacy and loop around to the furthest back lot up against the, uh, the old hemp farm there?
Correct.
There's do not enter signs-
Correct.
That you're not supposed to be going that back way.
Yeah.
People use it that way anyway.
Right. People do use it.
Because there's, because there's no parking.
Yeah. But all's I'm saying is I just, and again, just to reiterate it, you're just kind of taking it away from the building a bit. Now, again, I don't know how the testing facility feels about it.
Check that out.
But I think that you might be satisfying the bank part of it where you've had to make a reparation for them and, and kind of kill two birds with one stone. But again, these are just, you know, we're here having discussions.
If you have enough space, unused land, uh, that's, it's all grass, you, you take that away and you put in a pavement and then you add another, uh, another, uh, drive-through and one is for the back, one is for, for the, uh, the side, two stops on, there's plenty of room for them to make a left or a right, whichever, whichever way they choose to go. It's all about taking more land and creating the, the, the space so it's safety for the public. Whereas just grass would be nothing.
Mike, I think maybe what the next step should be is that once you have had a chance to go back and figure things out, maybe come in and meet with Brendan and I and see if it's even something that would work circulation-wise before we come back.
Yeah, I, I know, I kind of knew this would get a little sticky based upon a lot, few things, so we're just trying to solve a practical issue with what we have existing. So we're all going to try and figure it out.
The same thing on the, on the side of the pharmacy, just plenty of land for us to make three-dimensional land.
So I think you've got a lot of ideas. I think it's a great suggestion to go visit with Michelle and Brendan when you, when you have a concept that you think might work and take it from there.
Good. Thank you.
Yes. So we'll see you again, I'm sure. Would you like to move, move on to Preston Plaza?
Good night. Thank you.
Good night, sir.
Okay. Prestonwood Plaza and Fishco Plains Holding. This is actually a dual site plan. This was presented to the planning board back in 2006 originally, um, and received its approval, didn't get assigned site plan in 2008. Everybody's familiar with Vanwith Junior High School, um, which is over at the intersection over here. This is my office here. This is a vacant piece of property that exists right at the intersection here. There once was a residence, an old residence there which was taken down and we made the initial application. The, the, the proposal includes basically the construction of a two-story, 4,000-square-foot building, 4,000 square foot, 4,000 square foot. There's an extension proposed on the office part here, um, I'm going to say it's around 1,200 square feet. All right. At the time, again, we went to architecture review, got all that good stuff taken care of. We, uh, we actually got our permit from the DOT. Let me just talk about what, what, what the proposal was. So here's the existing entrance. My office comes in, there's a small parking area. You come in and out this location here. What was proposed is to, we wanted to pull the entrances away from this, um, intersection here, and if everybody's been there when school's letting out, um, it's a mess.
Good times.
It's a mess. So what we did is, uh, the DOT indicated this would be a right turn, right-hand only into the facility. Main parking here, there was a, a drive-through area here, but it wasn't for a drive-through, it was for just, for supplies and things such as that. Refuge enclosure here, right, the garbage enclosure getting picked up, and then heading out of here, this would be a right turn only here. There was a raised median in the middle to assure that happened. If you wanted to have this way on 376, you had to work your way across through here, okay? There is a shared parking agreement between these properties. Uh, this is only about an acre. There is a DEC wetland that resides on the backside here. This is the 100-foot buffer. So, um, we've got limited room in which to work, so we did a shared parking arrangement between the two parcels and it kind of worked out to allow for the access points to be away from, from that location.
So if you're going to go to Hillside Lake, you're going to have to make that right and then wait it-
You're going to come to Hillside Lake? Yep. You're kind of, you're taking, coming through here and you're taking a right.
Right.
Yeah. The, the proposal was approved based upon, um, basically this being all office use and then this building being, um, a mix of restaurant and retail on the first spot, first on the bottom floor and office on the top, okay? The, uh, and I'll get into the logistics and recent information I've got, but the idea was to keep the restaurant-retail use on the bottom side and, um, actually install residential apartment units on the top. One apartment unit was going to be here and then we were talking about a total of three here. The town board, um, not so long ago, actually modified their zoning code to allow for residential on the second floor in the Hamlet as well as some other areas of town. My understanding now is that in order to get that residential use on the second floor, it has to be an existing building. So, um, that kind of puts a little bit of kibosh on this intent. I'm going to have to go talk to the town board as well as maybe the ZVA because, um, as you may or may not know, there's plenty of second-floor space that's vacant along the strip. I think the town itself is, um, doesn't have many rental units, pretty deficient relative to that. So, um, I'll have that discussion with them, but I mean, we're here for a sketch anyway. So the intent was to change the use of the office use on the second floor to residential apartment, small, two-bedroom, one-bedroom, and such as that. What that did was actually knock down the parking requirement. So there was originally a big parking area that was shown in here, was part of what was required. That original plan actually showed that as being banked, so if we need it, we'll build it. The way the parking numbers come out now, we don't even need it. So at least we'll have this, this green area here and come along the front here as well. So, um, the other thing that's changed is we now have central water. Um, this was originally proposed with a well here and there was a well inside the building here. As part of this, we would, these parcels are within, um, the Fishco Plains Water District, so we would be tying, uh, both facilities into those. What that did was just opened up relative to flexibility on the septic system. We don't have sewer, um, soils are pretty good out there. So, um, you know, we think that we're, we're okay on being able to get septic systems approved here. But, um, effectively, um, we want to make kind of an updated presentation to you, to let you know what we're proposing. Sounds to me like we've got some logistic things to work out before we get heavy here, but that's the idea.
Did you have the wetlands re-flagged?
I ha, I haven't yet. I've, I've sent them the maps. Um, I know that they have been, they're working on this property here, so I'm trying to get them to come out and actually do them all the same shot. I don't see much of a change. As part of this, um, there is a wooden, um, post-rail fence that runs along here, and in fact, as part of this, we extended this. So this fence, which represents the 100-foot buffer exists now. There's a swell back here. We don't, hopefully it doesn't change because that was-
Just, uh, keep in mind, Mike, if you were to get a town board action to change the zoning to allow second floor, you're going to own a sidewalk and a pedestrian crossing across 376 to the school. That's going to come along for the ride.
Well, um, thank you for your input. This, this is tough. Again, I, I see it because I go into work the same time the buses are coming in and then, you know, I'm floating in most of the time and the parents who don't let their kids go on buses anymore are all piled up on the shoulder here, picking up their children. You know, there's an existing issue there now. Um, that really, I don't think was the issue then, what it is today. But yeah, there, there, I kind of anticipated that there would have to be something here to allow for, say, the pedestrian traffic.
Schoolchildren and apartments, right, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've sent the information up to, um, the DOT. She hasn't got back yet, but I wasn't pushing her either because again, this is her first role.
Well, a couple of things. One, I mean, I know that the DOT permit long expired, but, um, that permit though, did it require a stop sign on the, on the southbound slip ramp?
I think on, on, right now there is a yield sign.
Right, I think they wanted that switch to be a stop sign?
Yes.
Okay, so I mean, it's worth, in my mind, to go back to the DOT because I mean, I think one of the things that left, the left-hand turn that, you know, others have already brought up, I mean, they're just looking at just pure traffic volumes. There's 30% less traffic on that southern leg than there is, uh, you know, on the, the hillside 376 leg. So there's a lot less traffic to have to get out and take a left on.
You mentioned that in your letter. Could you explain that to me one more time?
Well, there, there's, there's more traffic on-
You've got two legs. You've got 376 on the high side and you've got 376 here.
There's, there's 30% more traffic on the high leg.
On this one?
Yeah, or, or 30% less traffic on the, on, on the southern leg. So I, I don't, I mean, I remember, uh, even Rock to Negro at the time coming in when, when you brought this back in the second time. Um, I mean, they, they had concerns about it, but it just, I mean, it almost seems like a left out of the site on the southern leg of 376 would be a safer option, especially if they're going to require you to put a stop sign in.
A southern leg, oh, oh, here or here?
No, no, yeah, on, on the southern leg.
So taking a left out of here?
Right.
So I thought for sure you were going to say traffic circle.
Yeah.
I really did.
It, it's an absolute location for traffic, so.
Oh, this is, I think about it would be awesome for a spot. You know, it's got plenty of room.
I don't disagree. I'm, I'm actually kind of curious about that.
No, I mean, well, they, they fit almost anywhere. But, you know.
I think I can safely say that.
You know, that, that certainly, I mean, you know, that, that might be a, a, a different level of development, but, you know, it certainly solves a pedestrian issue too.
Changing that to a stop sign, I can see that leading to a whole bunch of issues going.
I think that was a requirement of the original permit.
Yeah, the way, we wanted this stop sign here because they want people doing 90, which they do now, typically taking on my mailbox and rolling along through here on the, on the edge.
Yeah, to try to beat people up.
Yeah.
They don't even yield.
Yeah.
Nobody yields.
Oh, yeah, right. So, I mean, I, I think they looked at it as at least the stop sign would slow them down a little bit more than the yield, but wouldn't stop them, but it would slow them down a little bit, so.
So yeah, we're, we're, we, we definitely know that DOT's got to take another look at this, um, because it's, you know, it is what it is.
Michael, have you tested the infrastructure in that area to make sure you have water supply? Because when you go residential on the second floor, you're most likely going to have to put sprinkler.
Uh, whatever, whatever needs to be done on terms of the code, you know, I mean, that doesn't bother me.
I, I'm just curious if you tested the infrastructure, the water line there?
Um.
That's off the-
The new one?
The development.
You know, we can, you know, Scott probably knows a little bit more about that. They got the tank in the back and I don't know what pressures are out there. I mean, I haven't even tied my office into it yet because I have, we don't use any water. You know, so we still have a point well down there, but I think just for good, safe housekeeping, it should be tied to water.
The reference, we supply fire protection to, to Conic Innovation, so I don't, I think that's the least of the issues.
Yeah, that was really tight.
Is that a three-story building or is that just two? Questions or the comments?
The parking, you said, uh, you're going to maintain the level of parking that you had from the original plan, even though it's going to require less of a-
Yeah, again, we, this area here, there was a parking area proposed as part of this, but based upon what we actually thought, we, we showed it as banked originally. Based upon what we're proposing now with this change of use, it does, you don't even need it.
Okay.
So we're, we're showing that gone.
And there's a big opportunity for shared parking, especially with a restaurant. If the restaurant was busy at night, the offices would likely be not operational and then you'd be able to share the space.
And there were, we got, we went to the zoning board of appeals because there is a provision within town code that allows for shared parking, but you have to get an approval. So we did, did get the approval. I think that runs with the site. And then there's cross easements, access easements to ensure that maintenance facilities are done coordinated and that kind of stuff.
So are you moving forward with residential or office on the second floor?
This proposal indicates moving forward with the residential on the second floor. There is a hiccup because this is not an existing building. So I have to shake that out.
The zoning doesn't allow it right now.
Right.
The fact that we're before this board with this project at this point is because having second floor with a residential apartment use was, makes the project, helps the project work.
Yeah, it's more effective, it's designed more-
Right, we can rent them rather than not rent them.
Are, are we aware of any precedence of whether anybody's ever asked for residential on a second floor of an existing building in that area?
The issue's not an existing, it's a new construction.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Or a new. I mean, is there any precedence, uh, any requests now?
I don't think along this strip there's since launched, but an act that I, I can't think of anything that's built along that strip that actually, um, that has, um, gone through that, but.
It's kind of like going along the lines of like what they're doing out of that Eastdale project.
Right.
You know, combining like live work.
Looks nice.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Looks nice. The, um, um, you know, the, the issue, what works, why it works for this is because we have central water, but we have the ability to get a sewer disposal system in there. I've talked to the gentleman who was just here on his project and the problem there is not so much water, I guess we could probably make that work, but it's- and the problem there is not so much water, I guess we could probably make that work, but it's sewer. You add that kind of a use, and there would be multiple tenants across, so it's a great idea with an existing building, you have those multiple tenants, the septic, there's no area to make it work. So between the storm sewer and other environmental requirements, you have to stay away from it, just, it's just too much flow. This is, this is a lesser flow.
Well, to that point about the septic's don't work, the, the impetus in part was that if people could put uh, apartments on the second floor, they may want to participate in expanding our sewer district out to Fishco Plains, which is something we've been looking at, so.
Right, which would be great.
Michelle, does the existing reg say it has to be an existing two-story building, or just an existing building and they could build a second floor?
They have to, it has to be, the building has to be existing with the two stories, that's what the idea is, to, it was to, it was to encourage, um, conversions generally.
Okay, and reduce vacancy.
Yeah, I'm surprised that they wouldn't encourage new construction, so that the things would be designed to be able to support their kind of load and be more efficient.
The issue was until there was si, sewer, central sewer, they didn't want to do that, yeah.
Well, that's the problem with this whole entire corridor. It's really.
Oh, yeah.
It's a major.
About, about.
And what is it, that we're, we cannot get the school to participate on any level, to?
Not currently, no.
They've, they've had some logistical issues over the years with their, uh, system out there, so, uh, you know, who knows what the future brings. I'd love to have that, because it's one less thing to worry about.
I think everybody would. Would change that whole corridor.
Right. Okay. Okay. Appreciate your time, I'll go, uh, knock on some doors, and hopefully we'll be back.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there any other business to be brought before the planning board this evening? If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
All, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks.